I would like to welcome you and thank you all for coming. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have the roll call, please?
Sure.
Kellogg.
Here.
Shoemaker.
Here.
Vaughn.
Here.
Polin.
Here.
Hofstadter.
Here.
And Con.
Here.
Thank you. I would like to welcome you all this evening. This is wonderful. I love having this many people here to watch. We have two spelling bee winners, and neither of them could be with us tonight. Harley Moutou had her dance rehearsal for her very first dance competition this weekend, and she's very nervous. So she needed to be at her rehearsal. And Eddie. So I would, we would like to congratulate Harley and Harley Moutou and Eddie Butcher on their win for the spelling bee up at Millersburg Elementary. They went on to the county competition, and Harley got seventh in the county. So, good job, kids.
Good job, guys.
Yeah, that's exciting. That's exciting. So, are there any other visitors who would like to address council right now? No? Okay. Hearing none. Can we have a motion to suspend the reading of the minutes?
I'll second that. Con.
Polin.
Aye.
Con.
Aye.
Kellogg.
Yes.
Shoemaker.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
And Hofstadter.
Aye.
Are there any additions or corrections? No? Do we have a motion to approve?
I still move.
Second.
Shoemaker.
Aye.
Hofstadter.
Aye.
Kellogg.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Polin.
Aye.
And Con.
Aye.
All right. Bill resolution 2024-4. The bill's totaling $133,254.29. Are there any questions? Do we have a motion to pay?
So moved.
I'll second that. Con.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Con.
Aye.
Kellogg.
Yes.
Shoemaker.
Aye.
Polin.
Aye.
And Hofstadter.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Nate, what do you've got for us?
I've got a couple submittals for Design Review Board and Planning and Zoning Commission coming up March 6th. The Domino's Restaurant that's moving in at 181 West Jackson has applied for some facade changes on the building, and then also signage. Their signage is over the 32 square foot limit, so that's why they're, they have to apply for a variance from Planning and Zoning Commission as well. And then we also have a variance request from Noah Miller at 283 South Alexander for a garage in the front of the property. So PNG will be reviewing that. I haven't received anything back on the Worcester Road speed study yet. As soon as I do, I'll get that sent out. Had the bid opening for the 2024 resurfacing project on the 16th. Melway Paving and Kingsway Services both submitted bids. Melway is the parent low of 168, 145, to Kingsway's 176, 850, 42. We do have the two items that weren't included in the bid packets, mobilization and maintenance of traffic. Not sure how that happened, but it did. So we'll likely get a change order on those if the, if Melway, I'm assuming we've been awarded to Melway, all their paperwork checks out, the bid looks good. Might start off with a change order on that. So I'm recommending that we do award that contract to Melway and get them rolling.
So moved.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Polin.
Aye.
Kellogg.
Yes.
Shoemaker.
Aye.
Hofstadter.
Aye.
Con.
Aye.
Where was Kingsway from?
Kingsway is up by Mount Eaton.
Oh.
They're relatively newer company, been around five, 10 years now. We've got a loader we're demoing right now at the Street Department, and I think we're lining up, that's a case. We're lining up a CAD as well. Those are the two we've kind of narrowed it down to. Once we get that done, we'll go ahead and get an order placed. I gave Tex and Engineering the go-ahead to proceed on the plans for the Street Department Storage Building. Hopefully we can get those rolling quickly. Utility Department trucks ordered, should be being built right now. And then, as I said, the office, I guess I didn't say, Designer Review Board will also be reviewing our improvements here at the building. So once we get through that, then Klein thought they could start in April or May. I met with Joe, who is the East Central Ohio, is it East Central Ohio?
Something like that, yeah.
Forest, forester for ODNR, which is our region. I met with him today, actually. We were able to connect this afternoon. We looked at a, it's their 75th anniversary, ODNR, and they're looking to plant a tree in each county in Ohio. They selected Millersburg for Holmes County. So we looked up at Beer Run between the amphitheater and the pavilion. There's a pretty open piece of ground there. This, this tree will come with a nice plaque commemorating the 75th anniversary and that this tree was planted in celebration. They want it in a visible area that'll get appreciated, and I, that, I think that's, as you all know, that park's been a real hotspot the last few years. He thought it was a great location. I think we're gonna be able to plant it in a location that will, obviously this will change as the tree grows, but we should be able to provide some shade maybe in the evenings for the amphitheater if we can get a pack. It's kind of a triangular piece. If we can get it back in the corner, it'll shade that. That, that west sun right in there is pretty brutal at times, so it might be nice for the amphitheater users. Totally Outdoors was up there today finishing up the turf. They should be, I didn't get a chance to talk to him tonight, but I'm assuming they got done, or they'll be buttoning up this week with nice weather. Looks phenomenal if you haven't seen it yet. And if you didn't notice, they, they, I thought it was really cool. They striped it, so the grain on the different tiers is opposing, so it looks like stripes. In fact, it looks really nice. You should have all got a copy of the grant fair invitation. Let, let them know if you're planning on going, or let me know or get you signed up. They want a head count on that. And then personnel-wise, we've got resignation from Mason Radcliffe. He's, he's let us know his last day will be March 15th. So we need a motion to accept that. And then Clay Shepler will complete his probation on March 6th. And I, if you guys are okay with it, I'm comfortable taking him off probation now. He's got a CDL, he's got a license, licensure on the way. He's done a really good job.
Mason, do you know what he's gonna do?
He is going to Kaufman Furniture. Is that right? It's Kaufman. Yeah, they, he got a really good offer. They met all his requirements, and he came from the construction world and wants to go back to it.
When did we hire him?
Well, he would have been up for his probation like the end of this week, so here it would have been his start date.
You want separate motions on that?
Yeah, we should do those separately.
I'll make a motion to approve the resignation of Mason Radcliffe.
I'll second.
Con.
Aye.
Hofstadter.
Aye.
Kellogg.
Yes.
Shoemaker.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
And Polin.
Aye.
And I'll make a motion to remove Clay Shepler from probation.
Hofstadter.
Aye.
Polin.
Aye.
Kellogg.
Yes.
Shoemaker.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
And Con.
Aye.
With Mason's resignation, we'll get a posting out, except, or hopefully not accept any more resignations. Accept the applications and go through that process to fill his spot.
The zoning, on March 6th, what time is that?
Designer Review Board's at 6:00.
6:00, and that's here?
Here. Planning and zoning's at 6:30. That's it.
All right. Thank you, Nate. Chief, do you have anything?
I told you guys that I had applied for the Body Armor Grant through the Workers' Comp. We got approved. It's a 25/75 split. They approved 79, $79.10. And they now make our match 20, or our portion 26/36. So best in order, we'll get that rolling. We're gonna bring back the Peace Officer Memorial Service. It's something that hasn't been done since pre-COVID. So we're looking at May 17th, which was a Friday at 2:00 PM. As far as we know, that's what it'll be. If something changes, it's still in the process, but that's what we're looking at for a date. Then we'll, we'll make an announcement if it's incumbent whether we use one of the courtrooms and what we used to do. So I'll keep everybody posted once that becomes solidified. I do have the email, like I'd said before. I'll be reaching out to everybody this week to give you your information. If you want me to assist you getting logged in the first time, that's fine.
All right, thank you.
Chief, is that, is the Body Armor, is it updated Body Armor for all the officers, or is it additional Body Armor?
No, it's new for the, for the full tigers. We had used this grant for the auxiliary several years ago. The Workers' Comp, the state gave each department a certain amount of money, and I wanted to make sure we had enough to cover our, the full-time people with this grant, because it's so much easier than doing the federal grant. It's basically a fill-in PDF. It's real simple to do. So, and each calendar year, they've, they've continued each calendar year, but you, each department only gets X amount of money. And I don't remember off the top of my head what, what we're at. I wanted to make sure that we had enough for the full-timers to get their vest. And then I'll look at doing the auxiliary, because as long as it's not the same person getting a vest within the allotted time period, you're free to use that money up until that money's all used up. And I don't know if they'll regenerate it, but they have not. And I think it started in 20, not positively. I don't remember what year we got the auxiliary, the vest, but that was the first year for the grant. And as long as you've not used up all that money, you're free to keep applying for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Bobby, do you have anything for us?
Yes. Let me first say that I apologize about the agenda, jumping the gun a little bit on spring and put March on there instead of February, so my apologies. More importantly, our insurance carrier for our general liability and all of our property insurance is Assured Partners. And we just talked a couple months ago about renewing with them. And then just here on February 15th, the, our representative reached out to us, wanted to come see us, because the Ohio Municipal Joint Self-Insurance Pool has dissolved. They voted on it, and it's dissolved. Which Karen and I were a bit nervous about, but he came down the next day and explained things to us, sat down with Karen, Nate and I, and, and went over, they have an alternative for us. I have passed out kind of their summary of the, the coverage that's available for us compared to what we had before. So each of you have that, and you can see that the coverage is the same, if not better. With the, the only exception to that is the cyber policy. And turns out, cyber policies are probably soon to be a thing of the past. They're probably gonna be eventually incorporated into, I think he, I think he said the terrorism. Yeah, like the terrorism package. So, so our coverage on that did go down. So the burning question here is, what are we looking at premium-wise? And that was also good news. So just to give you an idea, in 2023, we spent a total of $53,707 in premiums. That was in, that had our, our regular policy with all the liabilities and properties, and it also added on, and included with that was the cyber policy. So the quote that they gave us last week when they were here is $50,215. So it's about, yeah, about 35, 3,400 less. So, we, and we have enough appropriated for it. That's not a problem. So we're left with these two options. We agree to stay with Assured Partners, we've been with for many, many years, and, and enter into the agreement with the new pool, which is called the Ohio Plan. Or, and keeping in mind that our policy expires on the 31st of March, so the renewal date's gonna be April 1st. So we don't have much time. But that said, we can look to accept quotes from other insurance agents, insurance policies, and agencies to see what they have for us. Time will be the crunch. We have to, by our second meeting in March, so March 25th, I think it was, is when we, we really have to, to have everything in place to sign and make sure that our coverage smoothly, you know, continues. So that we will leave up to you. Any questions about that?
I mean, is there any harm with checking and seeing other ones? And that would give us, we'd have to know by the next meeting?
Yeah, well, right. So here are a couple of things that we have to consider. The timing is, is tricky. We are down to kind of the wire. Gives us a, less than a month to get this done. And to get a quote, this is my understanding, Karen, you correct me if, if needed. We, we have to send them typically our current policy, not a big deal. That's just scanning out a document to them, fill out a questionnaire, and send our financials to them. I think, is it usually just the past year, or is it multiple years? I'm not sure. Yeah, 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 yeah. So I think time is our biggest, our biggest enemy right now. It is, frankly, it is tax season. It is crazy. But if, if that's what you all decide to do, then we can try to get the word out and see what we get back court-wise.
I think one other thing that caught my attention was our current, and I don't hold any of these numbers, but our current pool has been losing membership, and they're down to 30 or 40 communities.
It used to be over 100.
Yeah, and the Ohio Plan is over 800. So it's a huge pool. It's, it's very popular for municipalities. I think that says something.
They're gonna get a better rate, yeah.
Yeah.
Do you think people were leas, leaving the pool to go to this plan?
I would, I think the numbers kind of say that, I would guess.
Almost everybody I visit is with the Ohio Plan, and many of those were with the Ohio Municipal League, or several of those were, went to the Ohio Plan because of cost savings and increased benefits compared to what they were dealing, so.
What would you guys like to do? Would you like to go with this plan, or look for, look for other plans?
I don't have a problem with going with this plan for this year if we decide to do something next year, since we have a time crunch. So last thing we want to do is have a lasting coverage.
I agree. And since it is less than the old premium, I think it's a, a smooth transition.
I agree also.
I agree.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Vaughn.
Hi.
Polin. Kellogg.
Yes.
Shoemaker.
Aye.
Hofstadter.
Aye.
And Con. Thank you both for dealing with that stress for all of us. Is that all you have, Bobby?
That's all I have.
Karen, did you have anything? Okay. Bob, hi, do you have anything?
I'm not right now, thanks.
Okay, all right. I have a couple things. I wanted to remind everyone, this Wednesday at 6:30, that's on the Park Committee meeting, we will be meeting here at 6:30 on Wednesday. The Volunteer Police Officers Dependent Fund Committee will be meeting March 11th at 6:30, right before our council meeting. The Police Committee will be meeting March 28th at 7:00 here. And Tom told me that he was, sent me some things about the Record Commission, which includes the mayor, the fiscal officer, the solicitor, and one other person, and I chose you, Devon. I hope that's okay. And I thought we could meet here on March 25th at 6:30 before council. Would that work for you? Okay. Bob, that would be. Karen, that'd be okay? Okay, then we'll meet March 25th at 6:30 for the Records Commission. Some upcoming dates, this weekend, February 29th through March 2nd, is the Home and Garden Show in Mount Hope. It's $10 per person, kids 12 and under are free. March 6th is the next bicentennial meeting at 6:00 PM at The Chamber. March 9th is Clue at the Mansion. Tickets are available on Eventbrite. That's a really fun time. Oh, we're not on Eventbrite anymore?
No, they wanted to charge a ridiculous fee.
Okay.
You gotta call the.
Then call the Historical Society and get those for Mark. He'll be happy to sell you all the tickets. March 23rd, this is a fun thing. March 23rd at 11:00 AM, the library will be showing the Disney movie Wish, which is rated PG on the big screen at no charge. So if you have a big family, that's a free thing. You can come and do. Come down to the library on the 23rd at 11:00. March 28th is Art Town Millersburg at the American Hall at 7:00 PM, and April 6th is the Infrastructure Grant Meeting. So those are some upcoming dates. Moving on. Legislation. John and Molly are here. Thank you so much for being here. We have the third reading of Ordinance Number 2024-101, an ordinance amending the zoning map zone territory of the Village of Millersburg. Are there any questions? Do we have a motion to pass?
Aye, I move. So move.
I'll second.
Shoemaker.
Aye.
Hofstadter.
Aye.
Kellogg.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Polin. And Con.
Yes.
We are looking forward to you guys, see what, seeing what you do. Thank you so much. Uh huh. All right, we have the second reading, Ordinance Number 2024-102, by title only, an ordinance revising the previous ordinance prohibiting the use of freight or shipping containers as accessory-use buildings. Are there any questions? Okay, moving on. Reports of committees, we have the Tree City.
Yes, last Wednesday, we had our first meeting of the year and started the sort of preliminary planning for the Arbor Day celebration with the kids at the school, and just kind of roughly discussing plans for the year, so.
That's great. I, I did want to tell you, and I, I have talked to you about this, I've had more people discuss the berry trees in the downtown and just about any other topic that has come to my office hours. And so if we could do something with no fruit and no berries, that would be great.
We, that is one of the topics of discussion, was what could possibly replace, and how big of a deal it will be to replace those tree trees, pulling them out of the coffins. So yes, that's on our, on our itinerary.
Okay, perfect. That's wonderful. Thank you so much, Brent.
I did talk to Joe when he was from ODNR about that today as well. We walked and looked at a bunch of them. He had a lot of good suggestions. He's gonna send us some information.
Good.
That's great. That's great. Did you, did you tell him no berries?
Yes.
Okay.
He laughed, and he said, that's what I hear every town say.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's, yeah, crazy. Okay, moving along. Old business. So I have a couple of things. Have you guys been thinking or discussed with anyone about the Right on Red at Washington Street?
So, the cars that are parked along there, that's, that can be troublesome to see, even at night after, when you can turn after there. If there are cars parked along that front, you, you are saying a prayer before you go, unless you can see lights and stuff. So even you would almost have to, and that, that would be, that's a trouble to the cars parked there, to see past that, to turn.
I agree with that. That's the first thing my husband said. He said, I, I worry about those cars and not being able to see.
You can't.
And if people are coming flying up the hill, that might be a bad situation.
The other issue is, you know, we have enough pedestrian problems as is, and people start pulling across this crosswalk in order to try to see, but they can't see because of cars, so.
I did have a couple people ask me if we would be willing to put in pedestrian walk lines up at the school and over by the, by the post office. So that's just something to think about. We don't have to make any kind of decision, but.
I think at the post office, there is. There are.
Across the street?
Yeah.
Oh, are there?
Yeah.
Oh. I don't know how.
You mean like at College of Worcester or something, you're trying to go across?
There's like a bunch of white lines so that people know that that's where.
There's just a grove.
Yeah, two.
Two, but not, not like marking it big.
Okay.
And a lot of people.
Wide marking.
Yeah, yeah, just so people know.
Okay.
We have a yield, people too don't.
People don't pay attention to that. That's not helped, that's not been helping.
I just wanted to, I just want to bring that up. Okay, so our facade improvements, this is all stuff that was in, in our list that we talked about earlier, our goals. Our facade improvements are going to the Design Review Board for their March meeting. The Park Committee is meeting. The Audit Finance Committee, we're gonna discuss the strategic plan there, and then try and come up with a prospective plan to bring to council. That's the, that's the goal for, for meeting with that committee, and so whenever you're ready, we'll.
I, I was gonna check, it's appropriate time to see if March 18th.
March 18th?
Be worked towards between the two. Council meetings in March, Monday.
Okay.
It's still on the old business?
Yeah, yeah.
That includes Andrea, Bob, Brad, Village Administrator, Fiscal Officer, and Department Heads in Mayor.
Have we checked or anything more, been done about getting electric to the pavilion and the amphitheater?
Yeah, Millersburg Electric. We're waiting on, fit into their schedule. Give them the go-ahead, P and R number and everything.
Oh, great, okay.
Is everything with everybody?
What time?
Is that, what day, what time?
What day, 6?
What day of the week is that?
March 18th is a Monday.
Oh, yeah.
What time?
6:30.
6:30. Sounds good. Thank you, Tom. All right, the bicentennial celebration. So we had our second meeting. We're gonna start with a big parade at Thunder over Holmes County. So the mural, we are partnering, the village is partnering with HDM to do a mural on the old laundromat building, where the faded mural is that Rusty did. Arnie applied for a grant for us, and we were awarded the grant of $3,500. The Home Center for the Arts has an artist that is willing to come and do that mural. So this week on Thursday, no, Wednesday, Wednesday, Arnie and I are meeting with Mark Bowley down at the Historical Society to talk about ideas for the mural, because it needs to be a historical mural. So we're gonna meet down there and talk about that, and then talk with the artist, and then after that's all said and done, I will have something concrete to bring to you guys to show you what the plan is for that. But as, as of right now, it's looking like that is, that is completely taken care of as far as money-wise. We found out that there is a place over in New Philly that will make you a float, deliver it, and pick it up. Isn't that wonderful? All we have to have is a truck to pull it through the parade. So I'm going to talk to Carrie Rhodey, because she knows where that is, and the Antique Festival said that it is, it is very reasonable. So I'm gonna see if we can get a sponsor for us for that. And I just wanted you all to be so excited that the float is going to happen, and we don't have to build it ourselves, and isn't that great?
But we all have to ride in it.
Yes, we do. If you want to. I'm not gonna force anybody, but it would be great.
How is that?
Wave. Watch some videos.
Just go like that.
We could all do the Brad Con. See? Oh, there you go. I am not coordinated enough for that. Throw candy?
I was gonna say, I think I wore up my throw.
Yeah, yeah.
When the American Legion brought Santa Claus to town in December, Mr. Lawhead, our commander, has never been involved with this. It was always Larry. Well, anyways, he goes to Wes Maxwell. He, you know, runs the, this. He goes, what am I gonna do, Wesco's?
This is how you wait.
So Kelly, you, you went through a lot of stuff. It's a lot of good meetings coming up. I'm curious about the mural, though. Have there been any suggested things?
No.
Nothing?
Nobody has suggested anything. If you have a suggestion, do you have a suggestion?
Well, I'm, I'm just, I'm processing all this right now.
I, I did have, somebody suggested we do. I, I did have, somebody suggested, um, we do the, the evolution of the courthouse.
That would be cool.
That, that, that was one of the ideas that was given would be, you know, the evolution of the courthouse in the downtown. Um, but we're interested in talking to Mark and seeing if he's got any great ideas. You know, maybe the Opera House. I, I don't, I don't know. I don't know what he's gonna talk to us about, but, um...
Just out of curiosity, is that something that you need to get the approval of the building owner?
That's what I was.
I already got the approval. Mm-hmm. Yep, I already talked to him. He said, "You do whatever you want."
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. He was just worried about his dumpster so he could get his building fixed up and ready for dominoes. So no, yes, I did talk to him about that and we've got that worked out.
Is Mr. Singh, is he on the building now or is, he does?
Yeah, so anyway, so yes, I did, we did talk about that. Um, I had a couple of people give me some ideas for a Millersburg time capsule. Um, one would be a very well-labeled family picture or neighborhood picture in their neighborhoods or a big family picture as long as you labeled it very well. Um, so I thought that, that was a good idea. Um, and our coloring contest, um, I've been pricing out banners. Um, I've been talking with Erica that does the, um, veterans' banners. We've been going back and forth with different pricing and different things. And so, um, right now, Topes has the best price on banners. I'm just not sure how much, um... I know how much their banners are. I just need to know about the hardware. Um, so we're gonna be working on that. But that, that is the bicentennial things that have been working, being worked on behind the scenes as far as for the village. Does that sound good to everybody so far? Okay. Okay, there's shredding. So I have some, thanks to Brad. Um, he got some, some information from San Mandy, who the county uses for their shredding service. So I, I think exactly the same day, got the information from Go Shred, who we use for our shredding service. So, um, Go Shred's a, a bit more. Um, their quote was three hundred and fifty dollars an hour and for three hours, that's a thousand and fifty. Um, that's with one truck, um, and one worker. San Mandy came in at five hundred dollars total and, uh, that's a truck and two workers that have to help with the shredding and unloading. So, um, if we're going on cost alone, they're both available on June eighth, the day that we were looking at, uh, for Cleanup Day. And, um, both also recommend a box limit for, um, for community. Um, they both kind of recommend a three-box limit, like a, um, like a paper box, is that what?
I think so.
Yeah.
A bag of boxes.
So that's something that we can think about too when the time gets closer. But we've actually, I believe, um, both are on standby for us, so we just need to decide which one to go with.
I would just clarify that, um, Probate and Judicial Court uses San Mandy. I don't know what the other county offices use, but we've used them for the last several years. We've been very happy with them. Um, when they come to pick up our shred, we have six, eight, ten, twelve boxes. They lock them up in containers and they send us a bill after they weigh them. Um, they're very good to deal with. When they tell me they're gonna be there at a certain time, they are. Um, they text me when they're there. I mean, they're just very communicative. Um, so we've, we've been very, very happy with them. So, um, I would make a motion to go with San Mandy.
Excuse me a second.
Were they?
Yeah.
Do they shred, like, for the community shred day? Do they shred on-site?
On-site.
Okay.
Yes.
That's good.
I think that's important.
Yeah. I, I verified that. I don't know if you talked anymore with them about that. But I asked them if, if you shred on-site. I said, "I wouldn't feel comfortable, you know, dropping boxes off of tax forms or whatever and, and, and leaving." And then that's when they said, "Yes, they do," and they also brought up the three-box limit. And they did have concerns about, you know, because of businesses, you know, that might drop off, you know, if they're not told, you know, multiple boxes of shreds, so.
Bobby, were they for two hours or three?
They were for three.
Three?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, we have a motion for San Mandy. Do we have a second?
A second, that. Khan?
Aye.
Kellogg?
Yes.
Shoemaker?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Polin?
Aye.
And House setter?
Aye. And we are gonna go with three-box limit.
I think that sounds reasonable. Sounds good.
Anyone else have any old business? New business?
I've got two items. Um, on March the twenty-third, they have new council, um, members, uh, seminar and independence. My first year on council, Karen took care of me, set me up and everything to go, to learn what council people are supposed to do. That's on March twenty-third. On March the twenty-first and twenty-second, there's a grant-writing workshop in Columbus. And I think, you know, Karen, Bobby, and Nate should go.
I'm out.
She's out.
It's not gonna benefit you. They spend the money for you to go.
That's true.
You would have so much knowledge already. I know that.
Who's putting it on?
OML.
Are they gonna be here on?
No, I'm not sure. At the counties.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm not sure.
I was just wondering.
That might be.
We also have one for the mayor, but I missed it. I mean, writing it down for newly-elected mayor.
If you get that date, let me know.
Okay. This is Ohio Municipal League.
Okay.
Well, he hasn't said, "No, I think Bobby will."
Did you find that right on their website? I can look that up and see like the details, costs.
I get notices from them.
Okay.
I mean, we all should because we're all members, aren't we, Karen?
But you have to sign up for individually.
Ah.
Like, I get some of their stuff, but probably not all of it. So I'll get on there and look and, and see. But yeah, I'm, I'm open to that. Does anyone else have any new business? I know we have some visitors that wish to address council. Steve, do you wanna go first?
Sure, absolutely.
Sure.
My name is Steve Johnson. I'm a candidate for Homestudy Commissioner. I am one of five running for Ray Island Open Sea. I've been here before. I'm just, I'll talk two issues. Looking ahead to help the county and the village. Uh, as you all know, or if you don't, um, Millersburg Elementary School is gonna be closing, right? We know because the new school being built out of the high school. Millersburg, Kilbuck, Nashville, and Lakeville Elementary Schools all are gonna be closing and they're gonna be sold. This is the information I received from the school board that they're gonna sell. So looking ahead, it'll probably be maybe two years, maybe a little less, a little more. But I just wanna get the thought out there of the village thinking about what do we wanna do with it? Who can buy it? I think it's gonna be open to anyone. Uh, maybe the county will buy it. There might be some stuff going on behind the scenes that I'm not aware of. I mean, the county might already have dibs on it. I don't know. Um, but what are the options? Do you wanna tear it down? Think of the generations of people. Um, maybe you all have gone to school there, your parents and grandparents. I know that's how it is for Nashville and Lakeville. Uh, you know, we have generations of families going to those schools. So it wouldn't be right just to tear it down, you know? But my understanding is, uh, uh, Erica Strauss is the president, who's also a opponent of mine, told me they're gonna have hallways in the new building with the pictures from the old schools. You know how there's old? I haven't been to the other ones, my new Nashville-Lakeville, old graduates from the schools. Um, there are hallways in the new school with, with pictures lined up of them. So that would be a nice, kinda keep the memory of that. Um, but anyway, I'm just throwing this out here to think about, um, what to do with the old school, you know? And I wanna throw that out to not only you, but I'm talking to people in the community. And, um, what do you wanna do? I mean, this is your village. This is your school, you know? So, um, how can it be helpful to the community? How can it be helpful to, um, everyone involved? So that's the first issue, okay? Second issue regarding transportation, um, and this is probably, I don't know how long in the future this would be, but I just wanna be thinking about, um, you guys have talked about the traffic issue. I have spoken with the mayor and others about the traffic in Millersburg, the increase in traffic, trucks and cars, both, right? Well, I'm focusing more on the truck aspect of things. And, um, i-if you're not aware, I've drove a truck off and on for about thirty years. In addition, I went to college for about ten years and graduated four times. And, but I have experience in the transportation. I've driven all over the United States and Canada and I've had hazardous materials endorsement. What that means is I can haul hazardous materials. And hauling hazardous material is different than, well, it's not different. You're still driving down the road just like anything else. But there are other rules and regulations. There are many cities and towns across America, there's a bypass. And you may know, just driving to different cities, you might see signs, Truck Route or Hazmat Route, you may have to bypass, go around the city, right? The bypass. Even towns this size have alternate truck routes for hazardous materials. So I was reminded recently about, remember when the truck flipped over with the grain up here in the square, the corn, whatever it was? Okay, that, that's a long process of cleaning up and getting things together. What if that was a tanker truck hauling gasoline that exploded? What if it was, uh, another semi, not necessarily a tanker, it could be a van trailer, say a fifty-three-foot van trailer, we call it a dry van, um, hauling pallets of a hazardous material? What if it had products leaking out and it caused a spill on the square or in the southern part of town? Um, I wanna get you thinking about an alternate truck route around Millersburg. Because when you have a hazardous spill, emergency responders will tell you as well, there's different things they have to do. You have to contain the product. You gotta set barriers to contain it. It would be a nightmare in town if there's hazardous spills on these streets. So I wanna use that to get you people thinking about the benefit, how helpful a truck route around the town would be. And if I get elected, I, I would continue to push forward on this and to help. It would help in many different ways. Um, there's already roads, township roads, there's infrastructure there. We can just build it up and make it specific for trucks. And that's a, you know, I'd have talked to engineers and design, all that stuff. That's something else. But I want you to get the thought out there, uh, as you're driving through town and you see trucks. I mean, I was in town this morning and this trucks are rolling through here. Makes me smile, really. But at the same time, I know people who are in the office building, like in the chamber building, you know, they hear the trucks rolling out there, you know, and i-i-it's an issue, you know, something to think about. What if trucks could go around? You didn't have to deal with them. Think of Worcester. When you go to Worcester, there aren't any semis going through downtown Worcester. They're going around, right? And, and there's not even, um, it's not even a truck route. It's not even a specific truck bypass, I don't think. There, I think through town it might be prohibited. But anyway, just an example of how Worcester operates and go around and how it's helpful. So, um, those are the two issues I wanna throw out just to get y'all thinking about it. And those are some things that I'm concerned about if and when I get elected to the commissioners. And in addition to the daily operations of the county that I oversee and, uh, be looking forward to help the county move forward. But I think big, big projects, okay? But how can I help the county? How can I help the town? I've suggested we've got the things to the mayor recently and, you know, I, I'm open to things. I don't, I don't need credit. I wanna get stuff done. That's kind of my approach. Let's just do it. So those are my thoughts and just, uh, want you to think about it. Thank you.
I'll throw one thing out. Um, talking about the school. I was talking with Eric and I said, "Southeast sold the Homestead Building to Homestead for a dollar."
Yeah, that's what I heard.
So.
And that's something.
I mean, look how old those buildings are here. And Millersburg supported those buildings for years and years and years and continue to do so, so.
Yeah, and that's.
I'm not looking at the school board. They're not gonna sell them, you know, the way they think.
You don't think so?
Nope.
Yeah. But that's a concern as well, you know, the maintenance and upkeep, you know? I mean, like, is Clark in, uh, what's the, Glenmore? Are they, are they community centers now? And so, but it takes money to upkeep and do they use all of them, you know? And that's not a great location for, you know, you're right on a main route, you know, this is a good location. If a business would come in and either refurbish or remodel or, uh, you know, if they demolish it, I don't know. But it's a good location, so I just wanna plant that idea. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Jim?
Hi to all of you. I'm Jim Nospom. Uh, I've been a resident of Holmes County for about thirty years. I don't unfortunately live in Millersburg. I'm stuck out there between Kilbuck and Glenmore. But, um, I do work here in the village. I have worked with five different companies here in the village. And I really have an attachment to the village because I want it to succeed, which is why I'm here tonight. I took it on myself today to go around, uh, to various businesses throughout downtown and down, somewhat down eighty-three, sixty-two. Uh, and I just said to them, "What do you want from the village council?" And it was really interesting to hear some of their responses. The major response was, "Who the hell are you talking about?" Because they don't know who you are. Nobody knows who you are except for our mayor because she just got elected. And it's like, why don't we ever see them? They never come into our businesses, not to buy things. I mean, sure, I'd like you to buy things at the gallery where I work. But it's more important that you come in as council members to talk with us, to ask us about what we're doing. What's the business doing? How are we succeeding? Or are we not succeeding? Is there anything you guys can do for us? As I went around today, every single business I went to said that. It was not something I, you know, kind of probed, uh, proud of them to talk about. That was just the first thing that came out of their head. "I've never seen a council member," they said. I heard that over and over and over again. They know there is council. They have no idea what you do. You know, if, most people are not gonna come here and be in a council meeting like I've decided to do. Uh, and it's just a matter of, I think, the businesses in town need you. They need you to care about them. They need you to show up and talk with them about their businesses. They don't need you necessarily to buy things, though that would be nice. What they need is to know that you care about them. Interesting that you brought up a fact earlier. Some person said to me today, I don't even remember which of those businesses, but they were talking about the zebra stripes in front of the post office for crossing the street. And they said, "Why can't we have two of them? There should be a set of them for each driveway." Because people who park over here, yeah, there is one there. The people who park over here, no, there isn't. And so somebody brought that up today and you guys brought it up this evening. It's something I think, just a small thing that needs to be looked at. There were people, of course, they talked about, um, the traffic. They talked about the noise. They talked about, um, nobody talked about the trees. But they did talk about the sidewalks. The sidewalks from, uh, where is it? From, um, the middle of Jackson Street going towards the, the courthouse on both sides of the street, the sidewalks are in great shape. You go the other way towards Washington Street, the sidewalk is big and cracked. It's broken apart in various places. If some tourist or some visitor comes through and trips on what's outside Washington and Jackson Street, uh, you could have a nice, um, lawsuit on your hands. But the lawsuit isn't what I'm concerned about. I'm concerned about what the village looks like. And in that whole section from the, um, what is it? The restaurant, Cider Press, all the way down to where the new, uh, pizza place is going, is cracked all the way down. That looks like crap. It makes visitors come here and look and say, "They don't take care of their town." I need you to look at that, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. There any other visitors wish to address council?
I'm gonna follow up with him and a couple things I said last. Once again, the traffic on Jackson is abysmal. Uh, I wish I had a some way to get a sense of what, how fast these trucks are doing. They come flying up the hill, because they're coming flying up the hill to try to make that green light. They keep flying to make the next green light, and if they don't, it's a red, then they're slamming on brakes. Okay? We don't have little trucks that slam on brakes, you got trucks with fifty, sixty-foot trees trunks on there. Those things don't stop fast. When I sit in the front window at La Palma, where I work part-time, they zoom by, and the windows shake. That's not only the trucks, the cement trucks, the log trucks, any other truck, but it's also our crazy people who, in their noisy cars. And I think we talked a little bit about that these cars are beginning to be, in my time, it's hopped up. And they make more noise and more noise and more noise, so it's deafening. And the spewing of the fumes and everything else that comes out of those cars, and this is the middle of day, I work between eleven and two, so, and it's still zooming back forth, back and forth, back and forth. Now, I heard a nasty remark, this was a couple years ago, that... Uh, let's see, should I mention names? That someone was said, "Oh, we can't, we can't bother those truck drivers because they're local businesses, and we don't wanna mess with those local businesses, even though they're tearing through town no matter which way." Okay, that's enough of that. Uh, crosswalk, back to what Jim said. You do need the two crosswalks, you also need some kind of battery-operated, solar-operated sign that says, "Hey, fools, stop," because it's a crosswalk. At times, I have gone and used that little crosswalk that you use all the time, right? They're not gonna stop for me. They come flying up Washington there, they don't see the one sign that's there on the right. They don't, if they do, they don't have a read. The other way, too. So, I was someplace where they have the solar light, solar power, and the sign is the shape of the sign, but it has the lights that blink twenty-four all the time. One coming up that says, "Hey, slow down," one coming from the north this way that says, "Slow down." Need something to tell people, "It's time to slow down." I think there's an epidemic of speed out there on these streets. So, with Jim's idea of the second, and maybe refreshing the paint on the first, and then some kind of solar lights, um, poles, that say, "Come on, kids, let's slow down, people are up here." We are losing, as I talk to people at, at La Palma, and on Sunday, for example, we serve two hundred individual plated individuals from eleven to two. How do I know that? I counted the silverware in our boxes. And I get to see a lot of people coming and going, and mo- and because that's the church crowd, as they call them, they're mostly a hundred percent, ninety-nine percent from the county, from the village. And, um, I talk to them about everything. In one conversations, hand around, I asked them, "What do you know about the village of Millersburg history?" Nothing. "Well, my grandma lived here, and we lived here, and blah, blah, blah," but our children don't know the history. I had talked to the history teacher at West Holmes, because I gave him a bunch of books that I found at book sales on Holmes County. And I gave it to him, he was gonna, he was going to, um, put together a history program to teach young people about the history of the county, and who was here, and how it was important, and the village, and who were the Pomeranian family. They were a pretty expensive family, they were very famous in their time. Nobody knows now. Their mansion was torn down. Gone, another wipeout. Um, okay, speed limit on Jackson? History, so, as you talk about where you live, start to formulate some history of something presentation on the village. You know, how long it's been here. I know you're getting ready for the bicentennial, be a good way to plug that in. I wear them slides of the post office, speed limit, those are my things tonight. But if you haven't stood in our windows and watched the traffic go by, you're missing quite a race track. Thanks.
Thank you, Dave. Do we have any other visitors wish to address council? No? Okay, anything for executive session, anyone?
Yeah.
All right, do we have a motion for a German?
Second.
Pullen? Hossiter?
Aye.
Kellogg?
Yes.
Schumaker?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
And Khan? All right, thank you so much for coming, everyone, have a wonderful eve-